I'd like to go ahead and call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Regular Meeting of Thursday, September 18th, 2025 at 6:30 PM, and we are in the Assembly Chambers. The invocation will be by Hamilton Long of the Salvation Army, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Mayor, Assembly Members, let us pray. Gracious Heavenly Father, we lift up our mayor, our Assembly Members, and staff. We ask your blessings upon them as they attend to tonight's agenda, as they affect our people throughout the Kodiak Borough and community. We ask your continued blessings upon us today and the days ahead. We pray this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a redoubting justice for
We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Supiak' Alutik people, and we acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiak Alutik region. We recognize Alutik culture that enriches our community to this day. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ames.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Lidue.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Mr. Whiteside.
Here.
Mayor Arnt.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Jared?
Move to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. For the public's information, the Consent Agenda consists of approval of the regular meeting minutes of August 21st, 2025. Next item is Citizens' Comments. There are two Citizens' Comments periods, one at the beginning of the meeting and the second one towards the end of the meeting. These comment periods are intended for general comments as well as for agenda items that are not part of the public hearing. For those who wish to call in, the local number is (907) 486-3231, toll-free number (855) 492-9202. Please turn off your radio or any listening device to prevent feedback. For those in the room who wish to speak under Citizens' Comments, please come to the podium and sign in, turn on the microphone, make sure the green light is on before speaking, and speak directly into the mic. State your name for the record. Address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any member thereof. Do we have any calls at this time? No calls? Anyone wishing to come forward and speak, please do. Oh, you got one? Sorry.
You are now answering a call from the Q.
Assembly meeting, you're on the air. Please state your name for the record.
This is Monique Lewis.
Go ahead.
Can you hear? Okay. All right, perfect. So first of all, I know I have to address the Assembly as a body, so I will express my gratitude this way. It is certainly noticed and appreciated when a member of a body of elected officials takes time to ask questions and try to better understand an issue that is so clearly misunderstood by the members of the body. In comments during the work session, it appears that the debate about the Chinac Water System is still about capital dollars and projects. I understand the desire to look ahead, but looking ahead to a $750,000 capital project that may not even be necessary and delaying a decision until that project is funded or until growth in the community forces your hand demonstrates that only a little bit of the issue is being given focus or consideration. So solutions like busing students into town, which frankly comes across as a threat to shut down the school if we don't keep quiet, are being jumped to ahead of getting a plan together for the eventual need to apply for a public water status, public water system status. The required testing will certainly be more expensive than what is being done right now, but there are other options to include exploring a service district and partnering with other organizations that are installing public water systems and will be conducting testing. The manager mentioned in an email that she would see about giving this issue on the agenda of a regular meeting. I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but the Advisory School Board in Chinac, the KIB School Board, and the Borough agreed to form a committee to work on solutions to this issue, and I would suggest actually that this committee should meet and put together a packet and a plan to present to the Assembly prior to an item being formally placed on the agenda of a regular meeting. But in order to do that properly, I know my limitations, and I know what I know and I don't know, it might help for a member of the Assembly to serve as an advisor to this committee so that what we present is in a format that allows you to make a decision on something other than spending $750,000, because I promise you, we won't bring you a plan that asks you to approve a $750,000 capital project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in, Monique. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak in person, please do it this time.
Hello, I'm Sandra West. I just want to take this time to recognize the life and to honor Devon Sherrett. To the Arnt and Sherrett families, just want you to know that the family's grieving with you. We are hurt, and we cry along with you. I've got two minutes to breathe now. That's good. I also would like to invite Borough Assembly and citizens to an outdoor town hall. The Alaska Outdoor Alliance is coming to Kodiak for a conference next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. It's an excellent convention, conference, whatever. I went to one in Fairbanks and one in Anchorage. It's just well-done. And in the middle of that, on Wednesday, from 6:00 to 8:00, there's an outdoor town hall at Double Shovel Cider Company where everybody's invited, particularly people who are involved with outdoor business, guides, fishing guides, hunting guides, outfitters, and also right here, civic and elected leaders, candidates to join us on the evening of connection. So it's going to be well-run. Also, there's going to be a first-time opportunity to see Discover Kodiak's soft reveal of their newest destination video, which was created by a local filmmaker here. The Alaska Outdoor Alliance is keen on supporting and encouraging the outdoor economy, which, as I've said before, but I'll say it again, the fastest-growing economy in the state of Alaska, as well as the fastest-growing economy in the U.S. So in support of all those people that are, have outdoor businesses, I want to invite you all to the Double Shovel, Wednesday, this Wednesday, 6:00 to 8:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Anyone else wishing to come forward under Citizens' Comments? We have a call, so go ahead.
We're now answering a call from the Q.
Assembly meeting, you're on the air. Please state your name for the record.
Kelsey James.
Could you restate that? Didn't hear.
Kelsey James.
Okay, Kelsey, go ahead.
Oh, yes, I just have a quick question. The, there's, there's some difficulty for folks when they're trying to pay their bills at the Borough building, and I'm just curious as to what the normal working hours are for the employees, because if you go in there on afternoons, late afternoons, you know, 3:00, something like that, they're gone for the day. Not all of them, there are a few that are still, but the ones that you're trying to see are gone. And I'm just curious as to how that can be remedied for those that cannot get there at a certain time when these folks are there, and when they call, evidently, the, the, there's no, you know, nobody's answering the phone. And so, you know, leave a message. And this one individual had left messages before a number of times and never got a call back, and they eventually went in last year and, and she told me that they had paid their taxes. Luckily caught the gal, and it was during tax season, but if you pay something early, like this individual has, they totally put it in Dropbox, which evidently it was done. And so far, there's no acknowledgement that that check was ever received. So just curious, when is a good time for people to be able to go to these offices?
Well, normally, wouldn't respond under Citizens' Comments here, but I'll, I'll say that the Borough, it's typically the cashier that's at the front desk there, and it is open from 8:00 in the morning to 5:00 o'clock on there. And if there is someone just filling in, they'll get someone from the Finance Department, but there's not a problem. There is different hours that the city of Kodiak has, and there's a sign posted there as to what their hours are. So I'm, I'm not sure if you're confusing that, but I do know for a fact that somebody's there from 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 o'clock, and that's the, typically the cashier. So I hope that answers your question, but thank you for calling.
The cashier wasn't there when she was there, and evidently, they, this has happened a number of times evidently, but I don't know, it's just, it makes it difficult if you want to go in and pay it to them. So this gal is still waiting to see, even if they even checked the Dropbox, which this check was put in last Monday, or, I'm sorry, I guess it was Friday, Thursday or Friday, and from what she's telling me, and...
I would suggest you call in, and they can refer you to the Finance Department, whether it's the Borough or the city.
It's the Borough, it's the Borough.
No problem. The Borough will take care of that. So, but we need someone to call in so they can trace it down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very kindly. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience, or do we have another caller? Another caller? Okay.
We're now answering a call from the Q.
Assembly meeting, please state your name for the record.
Antonia Bravo.
Go ahead. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, yes. I'm just calling in in regards to El Chukano's renewal application. And so I'm just on the line to represent or answer any questions once that is coming up on the agenda there.
Procedurally, how would you like to handle that, Nova?
Mr. Mayor, at this point, we're, at this meeting, we're not taking any feedback from the licensee yet. It is an opportunity for the Assembly to review, and once you've made a decision, if you decide that you would like to protest the application, then we will schedule it at another meeting, and that would be the time for the licensee to defend the application.
Okay, you, you heard all that?
Yeah, I was just told to call in, so that's what I was doing.
Okay.
But if I...
No problem. So basically, there won't be any public testimony taken at that tonight, and if there's a problem, we will be notifying you.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for calling. Take care.
Have a good day.
Bye-bye. Anyone else wishing to come forward?
Hi, my name is Christina Van Hoegmoed, and I am the Development Director at K-MXT. I wanted to come to thank the Borough for funding the services through the nonprofit grants and on behalf of the whole nonprofit community to thank the Borough and, most importantly, the people of Kodiak for your continued support. We have so many great services in this community, and thank you, everybody who's a champion for other people.
Thank you. Any other callers? No other callers? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, we'll close Public Citizens' Comments here, and we'll move on to awards and presentations. First one is a proclamation declaring September 15th through 19th, 2025, Kodiak Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, and this will be received by Linda Immelblum, Adult Education Program Coordinator, here. So at this time, I'll read it. "From the Office of the Mayor, Kodiak Island Borough, Alaska, proclamation declaring September 15th through 19th, 2025, Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. Whereas Alaska Adult Education and Literacy Programs have been serving Alaskans since 1942 with general education development testing that result in a high school equivalency diploma graduating with approximately 500 students per year, and whereas these programs assist Alaskans in obtaining their high school equivalency diploma to transition into post-secondary education, training, or employment opportunities, and whereas these programs assist more than 2,500 Alaskans receive Alaska Education and Literacy Services annually throughout Alaska, transforming lives through education and strengthening Alaska workforce and economy. And whereas Alaska Adult Education and Literacy Programs provide adult immigrants and refugees with the opportunity to learn English language and skills for citizenship, employment, and to integrate successfully into communities, and whereas the Kodiak Regional Adult Education Program housed at Kodiak College offers the opportunity to develop skills and knowledge for education, employment, and citizenship, to increase self-image, self-direction, and to progress towards future personal career, training, and/or college goals. Now therefore, I, Scott Arnt, Mayor of Kodiak Island Borough, do recognize September 15th through 19th, 2025, as Alaska Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, and encourage all residents to support and participate in these programs." Linda, would you like to?
Thank you. Thank you so much, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next one is proclamation in recognition of the National Assessors' Day, and this will be received by Seema Garut, Assessing Director, from the Office of the Mayor of Kodiak Island Borough. Proclamation declaring September 30th, 2025, as National Assessors' Day. Whereas assessors and their staff are government officials who play a vital role in our communities by ensuring fair and equitable property valuations for taxation, and their accurate assessments support the financial stability and growth of the communities they serve. And whereas assessors utilize their expertise and technology to ensure that communities operate efficiently and effectively, and increasing public awareness of their work fosters public understanding and appreciation of their contributions to our society. And whereas the Assessor's Office upholds public trust through professionalism, transparency, and adheres to the International Association of Assessment Officers Code of Ethics, they embrace the highest ethical principles, pursuit of excellence, accountability, transparency, inclusivity, and responsiveness. Whereas Kodiak Island Borough assessing staff are certified through the Alaska Association of Assessing Officers, of which Borough Assessor Seema Garut achieved a Level 5 certification and serves as the President of the Alaska Association. Now therefore, I, Scott Arnt, Mayor of the Kodiak Island Borough, do hereby proclaim September 30th, 2025, as National Assessors' Day, and recognize the valuable service of the assessor and the assessing staff, and encourage the residents to acknowledge and appreciate their contributions to the community and to learn more about their work. Seema, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Arnt. I'd like to share this proclamation celebrating National Assessors' Day with my staff by introducing them to you. Here tonight is my lead appraiser, Cody Patzko, who's also certified Level 2, Appraiser Tech Connor McCallum, and Chris Glade, who also serves as a Bayside Volunteer Firefighter and EMT. And last but not least, Assessment Clerk Juniper Roman. Kylie Anderson is also an Appraiser Tech in my office, but she was not able to attend tonight. This is my team, the ones in the office and out in the field. These guys have not only been able to accomplish this year's remote area properties for reassessment, but also prepare, test, and validate the new software, which is a huge job, especially when you consider the short amount of time that some of them have been in the assessing department and the differences in the software. I've asked them to come tonight so that I could let the public know how proud I am of them and to let you know how lucky we are at the KIB to have such wonderful, dedicated people who are proud to live and serve this community and truly take their jobs and responsibilities seriously. Thank you.
Mind if we get a picture of all of them?
Sure.
Can you get us all, or do we need to try stand-up?
Sure.
God, now there's evidence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearing. I have ordinance number 2026-5, Amending Kodiak Island Borough Code, Title III, Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.35, Real Property Tax, Section 3.35.050, Board of Equalization. Jared?
Move to adopt ordinance number FY2026-05.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Seema Garut, Administrative Official.
Thank you, Mayor Arnt. Senate Bill 179 describes specific information for the Board of Equalization members when wanting to raise values. They no longer can do it on their own. It must be at the request of an appellant, and a long-form appraisal has to be provided. This just puts into code all of the rules and regulations that were changed because of SB 179.
Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and open the public, recess the regular meeting, open the public hearing. If you're calling in, once again, the local number is (907) 486-3231, and the toll-free number (855) 492-9202. I ask you to please turn off your listening device to prevent feedback. And if you're in the room, you know the drill. So, anyone wishing to come forward or call in, please do so at this time. Nobody. Hearing and seeing none, close the public hearing, reconvene, regular meeting, assembly discussion. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call, vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Ames.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Lidue.
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item is the Borough Manager's Report. Seema, you're filling in.
Thank you very much. The YMCA lease for the left side of the cottage buildings at 720 Egan Way has been executed, and as of Wednesday, they began moving into the space. Work is still being completed at North Star to determine the reason for irregularities in the fire alarm system in the building. Amy is working with the school district to resolve that issue. There are several positions that the manager's office that is currently recruiting for, the ENF Director, Environmental Specialist, and Landfill Manager for ENF, and a General Labor in that department also, and then in Code, or Community Development, the Code Enforcement Officer. In Community Development, last night, the Planning and Zoning Commission held its regular meeting. The Commission approved the CIP list, the land disposal by lease review for the fairgrounds, and the Code Amendment to Title 17 related to childcare issues all by resolution, and will be, and those items will be coming to the Assembly for approval. The Maritime Museum parking variance was postponed to the October 15th regular meeting. Community Development staff attended the Old Harbor Leadership Conference on Saturday, September 13th, to discuss the comprehensive plan update and to work with the community to address potential goals and objectives. Follow-up discussions via Zoom will be taking place in the future to fine-tune the comprehensive plan recommendations for the community. In Assessing, 16 applicants remain undetermined. Exemption village trips with Canada have been scheduled for the week of November 17th with backup dates for the week of December 1st, and this year, we scheduled three days with the Senior Center to assist in-town exemption holders. The Alutik Heritage Foundation hearing is scheduled for September 23rd, which will be attended by our attorney. Both Port Lyons trips for this week's field work were canceled, and a boat trip is scheduled for September 22nd with a backup date of September 23rd, and staff continues to familiarize themselves with the new software and meet with Tyler staff Tuesdays through Fridays for questions. Tyler staff will be in Kodiak for the conversion September 29th through October 3rd, and we plan on introducing them to the Assembly on the Thursday, October 2nd meeting. In Finance, the next payment deadline for those wishing to make full payments or paid their first payment after August 15th is Wednesday, October 15th. Staff is working with Tyler on final testing of calculations, entry screens, reports, and forms, and Finance staff will be entering transactions in both the legacy software and the new software for as long as it takes to verify data accuracy in the new software after the go-live date. The auditors are here this week for the final audit work for the FY 2025 audit. In Information Technology, this week, the IT Department is working on updates for our computing systems, meeting with Tyler about new Prop Access website and refining internal employee user account approval processes. IT is working with Engineering and Facilities on upgrading the landfill network to utilize a new Starlink satellite internet service there, and it's near completion on a new server for the landfill. They are also working on security patches for our systems and remediating any outstanding security issues. GIS is working with Community Development, providing maps for the public, and is also working with Tyler on the migration of the new assessing systems. In Engineering and Facilities, a comprehensive gap analysis and site investigation work planned to advance towards the closure of the spill at the long-term care facility, or long-term care center is under contract with NWFF. ENF will be reproposing the monitoring wells associated with the PKIMC fuel spill, and they will be removed after closeout. The Fall Commercial Hazardous Waste Disposal Event is scheduled for October 1st and 2nd and will be conducted by appointment only. The deadline to make appointment is September 19th, which is tomorrow. At KFRC, a lighting circuit failed and caused a small fire in the Egress Stairwell. Nodak Electrical will be replacing the light fixtures in both Egress areas. The Industrial Pump Alaska Order is moving forward with a new shipment date of December 18th, and the decontamination project has been reviewed and is ready- project has been reviewed and is ready to be advertised for bid. Discussion with the State of Alaska are occurring regarding the current requirements, and we have requested an extension for the 2026 construction season. The September 9 workshop took place at the landfill where they reviewed project objectives for recycling and waste priorities and constraints, discussed timelines and deliverables, and worked on developing a comprehensive table of changes to be incorporated in the update of the regional solid waste management plan. The new landfill fence energizer has been installed and small fence penetrations are repaired, and ENF issued an RFQ for the larger fence repairs. And the Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation conducted an inspection of the landfill and LTP on Wednesday. Results from this inspection were expected early next week. At the Chinnyak School, preparation of the exterior is complete. Primer application is roughly 90% complete, and a no-cost change order was issued due to weather delays. The new anticipated deadline is October 31, and ENF staff are working closely with the contractor to expedite the shipment of materials for the multi-facility elevator modernization, and they are also collaborating with stakeholders to re-prioritize the timeline. Both elevator systems have been, have an estimated ship date of mid-October and is estimated to take a minimum of three weeks to arrive in Kodiak. We are anticipating parts to begin arriving around mid-November. The small projects list didn't change at all. It's still the same, and we have the LTP sample testing, janitorial service, and solid waste management contracts that will be coming up for renewal, rebid. And then ENF staff added the committee board meeting dates to the report so that you guys are aware of what all is up and coming. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Seema? Seeing none, thank you, Seema. Next we have is messages from the Borough Mayor. I don't have anything except I encourage everyone to get out and vote on October 7, and also, early voting starts next week on there. Next item is new business contracts. We have contract FY 2026-13, purchase of enterprise storage from USI Corporation. Jared?
Move to authorize the Borough Manager to execute contract number FY 2026-13 for the purchase of enterprise storage from USI Corporation in the amount not to exceed $52,786.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Seema?
Thank you, Mayor Art. The Kodiak Island Borough currently utilizes on-premise systems which require high-performing enterprise storage. This storage is in the form of an HP Nimble Storage Array, which is rack-mounted, highly redundant disk-based storage that is accessed by KIB servers and stores its critical and networking systems. The current Nimble Array is over seven years old and has reached end-of-life status, requiring that it be replaced and upgraded. The quote will provide the following. It will upgrade the current Nimble Array to a modern version, which provides additional capability and performance. It will replace the drives and controllers as part of the upgrade, and it includes one year of support as part of the cost. The current array is our main storage system, and should there be an outage with this equipment, KIB systems would be severely impacted until it was repaired. Our IT Director, Fred Baristoff, is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call, vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Next is ordinances for introduction. First one is ordinance number FY 2026-7, amending Kodiak Island Borough Code Title II Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.10, Appointment of Officers, Commissions, and Committees, Section 2.10.030, Compensation for Regulatory and Quasi-Judicial Boards and Commissions. Jared?
Move to advance ordinance number FY 2026-07 to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Seema?
Thank you, Mayor Art. The Board of Equalization for valuation typically meets twice a year in May to hear valuation appeals and approve the rule for certification. The board consists of five members and two alternate members, each serving a three-year term. According to Borough records, the last time this board's compensation was reviewed and increased was 2008. The board chair is requesting the compensation amount be raised from $100 to $175 per meeting.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next ordinance for introduction is ordinance number FY 2026-8, amending Kodiak Island Borough Code Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.35 Real Property Tax, Section 3.35.030, real and personal property exempted from taxation regarding good cause appeal hearings. Jared?
Move to advance ordinance number FY 2026-08 to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly.
Is there a second? I need... Okay, we have a second. Okay. Staff report, Seema?
Thank you, Mayor Art. This ordinance updates the process in which good cause hearings shall follow. This ordinance clarifies the role of the assessor, the borough clerk, and the claimant, and the procedure that the Assembly will follow for the public. This is the procedure that we currently use. It just hasn't been placed into code, and since I was on a roll doing ordinances, why not update this too?
Any questions? Seeing none. For the public's information, we talked about these at the work session last week as part of the reason you're not seeing much discussion here until we get to the public hearing. So, with that, roll call, vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next ordinance for introduction is FY 2026-9, amending Kodiak Island Borough Code Title III Revenue and Finance, Chapter 3.35 Real Property Tax, Section 3.35.040, method of assessment regarding correction of the assessment role. Jared?
Move to advance ordinance number FY 2026-09 to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Seema?
Thank you, Mayor Art. Senate Bill 179 describes specific information for the assessor's roles in assisting the public during the appeal period after notice of values are mailed and how errors and omissions may be corrected. The first part of this ordinance clarifies the assessor's role for full and true value in the notices, and the second part changes or clarifies how errors and omissions will be handled when someone comes in during the appeal period.
Thank you. Any questions of Seema? Seeing none, roll call, vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
The last ordinance for introduction is FY 2026-10, determining the disposition of tax-for-closed properties acquired by clerks' deed in 2024 and establishing intention to surplus and sell said properties by finding that a public need does not exist for the properties and authorizing the properties for immediate disposal. Jared?
Move to advance ordinance number FY 2026-10 to public hearing at the next regular meeting of the Assembly.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Seema?
Thank you, Mayor Art. On July 12, 2025, the Borough acquired a clerk's, oh, sorry, July 12, 2024, the Borough acquired a clerk's deed for four properties via the foreclosure process established by Borough Code and state statute. Of those four properties, only two currently remain unredeemed. Those two unredeemed properties were presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission during their August 13 work session and the August 20 regular meeting where they were determined that a public need does not exist. The ordinance accepts the Planning and Zoning Commission's findings, classifies the properties as surplus to the Borough, gives permission for the properties to be sold, and establishes the conditions of sale. If the property remains unsold after being offered for sale by sealed bid, the property may be listed online for sale to any approved party for the minimum bid. The sale date has not been yet set, and Dora Cross, our finance director, is here to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Beau?
Thank you. I was just curious for the public that are listening, whether they're here or streaming later, how do folks access that information should they be interested in bidding on a property?
So, that information will come back before the Assembly, and it'll have a sale number. It'll be publicized in the newspaper on our website. We have, I sent notices to the two addresses on file for this property. One is in town, and he has contacted us off and on during the last few years. The other is an Arizona property, and we've not heard from them. So, yeah, it'll come back to you. It'll be advertised newspaper on our website.
Thank you. Any other? Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the work session, we discussed this. There was, I think, some pretty strong interest from the Assembly members on adding development covenants with the buyback option and owner occupancy. When would be the proper time to include that in the?
When we, when we talk about the sale.
Okay.
That's... Okay.
So, I'm sorry, can I just add? Normally, these are sold for taxes only.
Oh, okay.
These are foreclosed properties because anything over tax amount is refunded to the prior owner, and so I'm only interested in getting what's owed on our taxes for the taxpayers' benefit.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, these are not the properties that we were talking about that the land committee wanted?
Foreclosed for property tax. On there. Roll call, vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next is other items, and we have review of the State of Alaska Alcohol and Marijuana Control Office, beverage dispensary license, renewal application for El Chicano Incorporated, doing business as El Chicano Mexican Restaurant, license number 3299, combined renewal notice for 2025 and 2026 renewal cycle. At this time, I will turn it over to Nova to go ahead and give us a little bit of a report on this before we do a motion on there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly. On August 20, 2025, we received a renewal notice from the Alcohol and Marijuana Control Office for license number 3299 held by El Chicano Mexican Restaurant. In accordance with the Borough Code, we have conducted a review of the application. The review identified a fire safety concern from the fire marshal, which may warrant an official protest by the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly. The fire safety concern pertains to their location at 402 West Marine Way and not at the restaurant's current location on Resonoff. I would like to note that there is a pending application to transfer the location of this license and also the ownership of this license, which will be presented to the Assembly at the October 2 meeting. Voicing protest to this license will affect the impending transfer of this license. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of staff? Steve?
It's my understanding that there is a pending fire violation, but it could be resolved, and they have been working both at that location and their new location while that's being. So, I personally see no reason why the Borough should protest. Is that a fairly accurate description?
Mr. Mayor, I tend to not give my personal opinion on certain things, but my understanding is that it could go away, the violation could go away if it's transferred to the new location. Thank you.
Jared?
I just have a question about making the motion, specifically motion number one. Would it be appropriate in this motion to add in a clause pending the fulfillment of the deputy fire marshal's corrections? Or not?
I, I, that may not work because they're pursuing a transfer to another location. So, I'm not sure if the licensees is still interested in fixing up in the, in the current location when their intent is to transfer to a different location.
Jared, I'll let you make a motion.
Move to voice non-protest to the State of Alaska Alcohol Marijuana Control Office, MCO, BDL renewal application for El Chicano Mexican Restaurant License Number 3299, and direct the clerk to notify MCO of this decision.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on there? Nova, thank you for the education.
You're welcome.
All right. Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Next item is approval of the revised Planning and Zoning Commission bylaws. Jared?
Move to approve the revised Planning and Zoning Commission bylaws.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly. At its regular meeting of August 20, 2025, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed and adopted revised bylaws. They are, they also recommended that this be forwarded to the Borough Assembly for approval, which is required by code. The changes to the bylaws address several issues such as quorum and voting requirements, use of executive sessions, work session review of quasi-judicial items, electronic participation by commissioners, commissioner training requirements. A markup version and a clean version of the bylaws were attached to the packet, and CDD Director Chris French is also here, just in case you have additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Beau?
I just want to take the opportunity to thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for all their work they've been doing recently. It's noticeable. They're getting us up to speed in a lot of code, so I appreciate those efforts and the efforts of Mr. French in guiding discussions. It's very, we're very grateful for it. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
All righty. Next is appointment of the October 7, 2025, regular municipal election officials. Jared?
Move to appoint the election officials for the upcoming October 7, 2025 municipal election as listed on the memo submitted by the Borough Clerk.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly. Included in your packet is a roster of election officials for your consideration and appointment for the upcoming regular municipal for the upcoming regular municipal election. This roster comprised of individuals assigned to work on Election Day at the precincts, the receiving team, and a canvas board who convenes a week after the election. The borough expresses its appreciation to all volunteers who commit countless hours to training and service. And if I may, with your permission, if I could read the names of the election workers, please. At the, at precinct number 820, which is at the harbor, we would like to thank our chairs, Sandy Piotta and all the other workers such as the co-chair Joan Altenhoff, Crystal Blanco, Ellen Lester, Jenny de la Fuente, Marilyn Davidson, Joyce Gregory, Susan Jeffrey, Jill Skaw. At Kodiak number two, which is at the teen center, our chair is Nanita Nicholas, co-chair Jamie Bennett, Judge Martha Bronson, Melanie Weller, Virginia Puzon, Jonana Arlov. At the Mission Precinct, our chair is Anita Scholl, co-chair Allison Borden, and our judges are Kathleen Carlson, Marion Contra, Robert Lachowski, Eric Grup, Lenith Fronda. And at the flats, our chair is Robin Keeling, Robin Keeling, and co-chair Michelle Wickley. And judges, Marion Hickey, Sophie Fretz, Kristy Wall, Jacqueline Laundrie, Laura Maloney Eggle. And then our receiving board on Election Night, Heather Fincher, Teresa Medina, Brian Price, and Bronwyn Curry. Our canvas board, Sally Halderang, Randy Bush, Kate Lowen, and Karen Steele. Thank you to all of them.
Thank you for reading all their names.
And also the Borough Clerk staff and the City Clerk staff. Thank you.
So noted. Thank you. Okay. Any questions? Go ahead, Larry.
Many of the people on this list have been doing this for many, many years. In fact, I, probably some of them wouldn't even let me vote. They've been there that long. So, I really appreciate that you've created such a team and the fact that they want to keep doing it is an indication of your efficiency and how well you manage these elections for Kodiak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Lidue?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Next item is declaring. I'm sorry. Assembly member Ryan Sharrett's seat on the Assembly vacant. Jared?
Move to declare Assembly member Sharrett's seat on the Assembly vacant and direct the clerk to advertise the vacant seat per Borough Code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly. On September 2nd, 2025, Assembly member Ryan Sharrett submitted his resignation letter from the Assembly. There are still more than 90 days remaining in the term since the position he holds will not end until October 2026. The schedule for filling this vacancy is outlined below. September 19 and 26, we will post ads for the seat in the Kodiak Daily Mirror. From September 20th to October 4th, we will be receiving applications. Starting tomorrow, we will be posting the applications online and those who may be interested in getting paper copies may, may drop by at the clerk's office. On October 9th, tentatively, we have scheduled to conduct interviews with applicants. On October 16, the Assembly may finalize appointment and administer the oath. We have a strict 30-day timeline from the time, from tonight, when you vacate this seat, we have to appoint someone within 30 days. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions or discussion? Jared?
I just want to say that we, we accept this resignation with, you know, with, with regret and, you know, with a, with a heavy feeling. I just want to say that Ryan made our group better. Ryan brought a perspective that a lot of us don't have up here, which can only make a group better. Ryan's expertise made us make better decisions. Ryan's opinions, maybe many of us did not share, still made us smarter. And I think until a new member is appointed, I think our, our body is, is, we are less because he's not here. So, I will always be eternally grateful for the things that I learned from Ryan. And I'm glad that I got to be here to teach him a few things, too. And so, yeah, that's it.
Anyone else? Beau, and then Dave.
Thank you. That was, that was very well said, Mr. Griffin, and I agree with all of those points. Ryan, I remember when we both sat at that desk when there was a vacancy up here and I had to, not necessarily compete, but advocate for my candidacy against Mr. Sharrett. And I'm glad I lost. Ryan, he did more, more research and put more effort into every meeting and agenda item than I think most of us combined. He did it pro bono. He always donated his stipend. Just a true generous leader in our community. I learned a lot from him. I miss him already, but really appreciate his service.
Dave?
Thank you. I wish I'd gone first because I hate going after people who speak better than me. Yeah, I'm honored and proud to call Ryan a friend and colleague. It breaks my heart to vote yes for this. Ryan and I were often not on the same side of these issues, but he's got incredibly well researched and formulated opinions. And as was said, we will be weaker not having him here, especially as we look to solidify our contracting procedures, our environmental compliance, business acumen. My heart goes out to him and his family and they're in our prayers. Thank you.
Larry?
I appreciate all the words that have been said. You know, as I sit here and feel bad about Ryan not being on the Assembly, he leaves a really empty seat. His business acumen, his insight, his caring for the public, his knowledge, and his questions will certainly be missed. But the way the grief of his loss against what him and Nancy are facing right now, it just, it's hard to find words to comfort or to move forward. So, also I would say is, Ryan, I appreciate all the work that you've done. I think you've been a role model. And as an Assembly member said, you make us all better. And thank you for serving.
Yeah, he knows how I feel. Roll call vote on the motion.
Mr. Whiteside?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Lidue?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Next item is citizens' comments. For those who wish to call in, the local number is 907-486-3231. Toll-free number, 855-492-9202. And ask you to please turn off your radio or any other listening device to prevent feedback. And for those of you in the audience here, you know the drill. Go ahead, Carleen.
My name is Carleen. Good evening. I came tonight. I knew this was the last thing on the agenda, but from the audience, I appreciate Ryan also. And I did agree with almost everything that he said. But I also appreciate the ones that will be leaving the Board, Larry Lidue and Jared Griffin and Ryan. I just want to tell you all thank you. And I, I've been praying much for this family. Just I'm grieving for them. So, I just want to let this family know that we love them, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to come forward? Any phone calls? Seeing none, we'll move on to Assembly member comments. Larry, we'll start with you tonight.
Thank you. Glad to be here. I appreciate all the work that the Assembly is doing tonight. A lot of work done. I don't have a lot of comments. I just want to say congratulations on running for office. You know, I see your T-shirt out there, Sandra, and good luck. And one of the things that I just wanted to mention is we have early voting starting next week. And I was wondering, just for new people, if you could describe how easy that is and what somebody would do who wants to early vote? Would that be okay?
Go ahead, Nova.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly. It is very easy. It's just like going to any of the precinct. You don't need to fill out any forms. All you need to do is sign on the register. It's just like voting at the precinct. Present your ID and then we will give you your ballot and your ballot will be fed into the machine. It doesn't, your vote actually during early voting will be counted towards the, included in the unofficial ballots. So, they, they won't be waiting until canvas. So, they will be included on Election Night. So, that's the advantage of doing early voting as opposed to absentee by mail and stuff like that. So, we'll be here in the Assembly chambers and we'll open at 10:00 a.m. And we'll be open until 4:00. And this will go on until October 6th. We will be doing personal representative voting as well. So, if you have any relatives that can't go to the, any of the precincts on Election Day, you may come in and pick up a ballot for them and take it to them and bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Nova. Steve?
Like Beau, I sat at the table when the decision was made of an Assembly member replacement. And Ryan was the chosen one. And at that point, I knew who he was. I recognized him. I could say hi to him. But I didn't really know the man. Having seen him in action, the Assembly made the right choice at that time. Then I've been voted in. And having served with him, I'm glad to be able to call him a friend and I've learned to respect him. I don't know how he did it. He has so much going on with the paintball thing, with his businesses, everything else. And he's still found by far more time than I did to research and go through things in the packets. He will be missed. Not everybody, including myself, always totally agreed. But he brought up valid points and he made me think. And I always appreciate people who will make me think and challenge my opinion. And I'm glad I can also say about myself and not writing that I can be open-minded enough to listen. And sometimes he got me to change my mind because of the facts he revealed. He will be missed. And I believe the Assembly, it is a loss without him. I do truly understand why and so fully accept his recognition without any doubt. He's doing something he has to do for himself and his family and that's the only appropriate thing at this time. Thank you.
Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank all of the election volunteers that we voted in tonight. It's, volunteers like that are the, the bedrock of our democracy. And in defense of that democracy, we're a small town. We know the folks on this list. We know when we go to cast our votes, they're going to be fairly counted and tabulated. I challenge our, ourselves and our community to realize that all over America, it's the same types of volunteers who sit at those election centers and take those votes and tabulate them. And just because we don't know those volunteers in those other communities, doesn't mean they're doing any less, putting any less effort or any less integrity in, in what they do. We can only have a functioning democracy if we can cast our votes and trust in that process. So, yeah, my thanks to all of them and what they do.
Jared?
Yeah, I would just like to throw my support and echo what Dave said about our municipal election workers and what Larry brought up about early voting. Next Tuesday is the, the candidate forum. If you need help making a decision for borough candidates. And then the week after that is the one for city. So, stay tuned for those. And then I would also like to throw my support into at least talking about an, an Assembly advisor or seat on this committee that Chinniak and the school district are forming about, about looking at the water out there. I think that Chinniak is looking like they're making some steps towards organizing in some way. So, I think the borough should be walking, walking with them as they're looking at some of these things. So, I would support that. Thank you.
Beau?
Thank you. I'm just going to keep saying this until Election Day arrives. We need to improve the turnout. I'm encouraged by the number of candidates this time around versus previous years. It's challenging to me sitting up here when I do discuss some of these items with the community and then, and then I find out, I don't ask them directly, but I didn't vote. That always just really confuses me in that because our system here is so efficient and these wonderful volunteers on this list do such a good job. I say this and I don't exaggerate. It takes longer to make a pot of coffee than it does to vote in Kodiak. Please understand that the people you, that are running for office can and will change your life. And if you're not willing to spend the amount of time that is, again, less than making a pot of coffee or filling up your tank of gas, that's just really frustrating for me. So, if you're listening or streaming this later and you know people who, who are concerned about the issues that are going to be put on the dais here in front of us, encourage them to get out and vote. Take them with you, carpool, yank them off the couch and get them out there to vote because we do have the ability to change your day-to-day lives. So, please vote.
Thank you. The next Assembly work session is scheduled on Thursday, September 25th, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. The next Assembly regular meeting is scheduled on Thursday, October 2nd, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. in the Assembly chambers. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Been moved. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:39.